At Council Plus Savings Bank, you get personalized customer service like nowhere else, like our Travel Club.
Come see us, bank with us, and travel with us. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. I'd like to call the meeting to order and knock my glasses on the floor. Let the record show that all council members are here. And could I get a motion for the consent agenda, please?
It's all moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Tonight, we have six public hearings. And the first one is Resolution 15-267, approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimate for the industrial park levy improvements Phase Two, Project Fiscal Year 16-07. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight who would wish to address the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Motion to waive third.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Second public hearing is on Ordinance 6244, repealing Ordinance Number 5757, with the approved, which approved the tax increment financing district for the Bart's Motel Urban Renewal area. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight wishing to address the council in regards to this Seeing none, what is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And I've got a slight text amendment, so that I don't have to read Marcy's ordinance. On this next one, this is a time and place for a public hearing, is advertised on the matter of Ordinance 6245. Amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.070 by rezoning 7.8 acres more or less of land located in the north side of Greenview Road identified by the county assessor as parcel number 744305276004, and legally described as set out in the agenda from R3 Urban Residential District in the county to R1 Single Family Residential District in the city as defined in Chapter 15.08B. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
What's the northern latitude on that?
The reason people are laughing is there's about one newspaper-long column line of legal description that talks about 80 degrees, 20 minutes north, 15 seconds to the west, and so...
The wonders of meets and bounds. There's no mention of a stream or tree, though.
Takes about five minutes to read.
Yeah, so we get away with that, is why they're laughing. So, is anyone here who wishes to speak to the council in regards to this rezoning issue? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Motion to waive third.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing, is advertised on the matter of Ordinance 6246. Amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.070 by rezoning the properties legally described as lots 6 through 10, Block 1, Hag's First Edition, from R3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential District to AP Administrative Professional District as defined in Chapter 15.13. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight who would wish to address the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing, is advertised on the matter of Ordinance 6247. Amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.070 by rezoning the property located at South 19th Street and Gifford Road, and legally described as the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter, part of the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter, part of the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter, along with part of Government Lot 2 located in Section 14-74-44, from A2, which is a parks estate and agricultural district, to I2 General Industrial District as defined in Chapter 15.21. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here wishing to address the council in regards to this matter? Could you please step to the microphone and give your name and address for the record?
Hi, I'm Jan Smith, and I live at 4819 Gifford Road. I'm here just to ask a few questions along with this rezoning. I have talked to Mr. Munt there on the phone a little while ago, and he says he has sent me stuff. I haven't looked on my email at this time. One of our concerns, if we have lived on Gifford Road, my husband has lived there almost his whole life, we have taken over his household and we have still lived. Most of the housing along that road have been there for years. What I am concerned about is, I like the idea of Council Plus expanding, and so on to that, but one of my things I just, I can't get through, of all this time that we've lived there, we have actually had no help from the city for road upkeep. I mean, it's always fight, fight, fight. No snow removal, it's a fight. And now, out of the clear blue, this is prime property. You guys are sitting on a swamp down there. I can't, I can't begin to tell you how much swamp it is. And I just want to know, my, that's why I really would like to know why now. What has made this prime property now?
Well, I think...
I mean, I could come up with probably a good two or three other places that would be more productive than...
I think a really simple answer is, one, initially, our planned industrial development was to the south, towards the power plant, and Google has purchased all that land and owns it, and so now there's not really an opportunity to go there. And so then it comes down to economics, and we looked for alternative industrial ground and, well, two things. One, we looked for alternative industrial ground, and we looked north going towards Crescent. It was about $1.4 billion to put in the infrastructure. The infrastructure is close to the Gifford Road property. That said, at one time, the owners of the property were not willing sellers, and I think that's changed too. So probably the combination of those two, the proximity to infrastructure and the fact that the property owners are now willing sellers. We'd started to the east of that area on South Omaha Bridge Road. They have an industrial park, as you know, on Lew Ross Road. They moved down to the other side of Indian Creek, and that's been developed, and so they're just progressively working their way to the west.
Then, the one thing I want to make sure, there are in, a storm drainage is in the papers to be put in. And if I understand that right, that is north on the other side of my road, the north side of Gifford Road.
There'll be storm drainage put along Gifford Road.
Okay.
Which will be rebuilt.
So is it going to basically come down, turn, and head towards Indian Creek?
I don't believe in the first phase that's the case, no.
Okay. Because that was one of our concerns too, is if that land in front of us all goes to concrete, we'd like to know where that water's going to go, because if there's not a storm sewage, it's going to go in my basement.
Yeah. It will have to be engineered so that it doesn't go in your basement. If a new development were to divert the flow onto you, that would be grounds for a civil lawsuit on your part, so...
Okay. And then my only other thing that I really would like to talk about is, I've lived there, I've got to think how old my daughter is. I've lived there 26...
Can't be very old.
26 years. Oh, yeah. I've heard that, yeah. I've lived there 26 years, and now, you made me lose my train of thought. But once I get a compliment, you know?
Sorry, I apologize for that.
We like it down there. We'd like to stay down there. I have no desire to move, because back to the fact that I live in the city, you wouldn't be able to tell it by the stuff that is around me. I sat there and heard owls hoot out my window the other night, which was kind of cool. But I just want to make sure that when I, when you guys develop this, I don't want to be looking at a back end of a trailer. I would like not to look at a dumpster. I mean, right now, sometimes we have problems even with redemption center. But usually, if I will call, you will see men out there picking up trash out of the cornfield and off my fencing and everything, because the wind comes up and it blows it along. But I mean, I think that's only legit, that I don't have to look at these things. I mean, like, trees could be put up, shrubs. I really don't want to see a fencing, but if it comes down to that, it's that ugly, yeah. But I mean, I just, that's one thing I just, yeah.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah. So, and I guess that's about all I have to say, but I still can't see a building in a swamp.
I understand your concerns exactly, and I had similar concerns about another potential project, and I went and visited that site, and I even drove down all the way south around where your property is, and walked a lot of that, and talked to, talked to some people that own an existing trucking company, and another was going to be constructed right next to it, and they had similar concerns, that they had been there a long time, had invested a lot in their property, was very concerned about drainage. And I have to say, kudos to the developers who are managing this project, because when a company wants to go in, there are a number of guidelines that those companies have to build to that help provide for that drainage and for that, those aesthetics, and for the good neighbor practices that you allude to. And sometimes I'm a skeptic about these sorts of things, but I was reasonably impressed that they were willing to spend the money to make sure that the drainage was right. The neighbor already there was won over, and they think that their business is going to be benefited as a result of it. And I think you'll be pleased by the additional development on the road and the access and the overall aesthetics. May need some security fencing at some point, but you know, everybody wants to protect their investment. But I think, you know, overall, once you see this thing start to move and you start, you know, interfacing with folks that have the details on what may be going in there, you'll have an opportunity to be heard, as this other businesswoman was able to be heard.
Well, and that also brought up two other things, about living down there all this time and everything. I had city water not even a quarter of a mile away from my driveway, but the water plant came in, and now we all got it. But I wasn't going to get it at all unless that came in. And I think that's one of the things I'm talking about. You guys, you can purchase property, make it do what you want to do, but I don't see a lot of people making it do what I want to do. And I just don't mean Jan Smith, I mean all the people that live down there. And then I also found out that you were paving roads down there. We're going to pave Gifford Road coming straight down and going down 19th, which is right through a cornfield, but nothing else.
Well, and please don't take this wrong, I don't want it to sound like I'm speaking negatively, but it's all about economics, and you know, there are five houses in your street, and that's it. And I don't know if I know exactly where you live, but there's that one string of about five houses.
And then it goes around the corner.
Okay, and so you're further down?
No, I'm...
One of the five houses?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, when it comes down to economics, you know, it is about $3 million, I think, to put in that road paving. And so, the houses were there for many years, as you said, predated anything, and they had septic tanks, they had wells. Just is difficult for the city to take other taxpayers' money to pave a road and put in sanitary sewer and put in water, and the Water Works is not part of the city, they're their own separate entity, for the amount of tax base that comes off those five houses. And so, it's just a density issue. There wasn't enough dense development down there to cost justify that type of investment. The proposed development we're talking about will create tax base, and now it's economical, and it's something that is reasonable to consider, so...
Okay. I guess that's about it. Other than, our road was pretty good until the water plant came in.
Yeah.
And those trucks broke it all up, and then we flooded.
Yeah, it gets a lot of travel.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the council?
My name is Bob Munt. I work for the Chamber of Commerce, 149 West Broadway. We represent Council Plus Industrial Foundation. We're the developers that are hoping to develop this property. The information that you had presented to you regarding the rezoning of that came through us. We have met with many of the property owners, not only along Gifford Road, but also across the creek in Pelican Cove and a couple of the other neighborhoods over there, to kind of talk about their concerns, and we're certainly aware of those issues going forward. We've been looking to develop property now for probably four or five years. We've looked virtually everywhere to developments that we could develop economically that we think would work. And as the city progressed to the south, Matt kind of hit the nail on the head there in that we've kind of been moving in that South Point Industrial Park area to the south there, and it makes sense, because the infrastructure is there, it makes sense to move in that direction. We are certainly sensitive to the environment down there, making sure that, you know, what we do is going to try to fit in with some of the things that are there right now, certainly recognizing that into the future, that whole area down there may transform itself into an industrial area or a commercial-type area. So, as we develop our plans, we have guidelines and covenants that are actually more strict than what the city has on the books, things like setback requirements, landscaping, screening, building height requirements, lighting requirements. All of those things are covered in our design guidelines and covenants. And so, we try to be sensitive with the people that are around us, whether it's residential or commercial or industrial, to make sure that we can fit in with that. As we move forward in this development process, we're looking at one large lot, one kind of medium lot, and really three kind of five-plus acre lots to start out with, to see if we can't market that out into the community, market that out into our database, to make sure that we can get some people in to take those particular locations. As to who those companies are going to be, we don't know that yet, but every time we get a company that wants to come in, we have to come before this body, basically, and get permission, if you will, to do a lot of the things that we want to do with that. So you'll be very much aware of the types of companies that are going to be going in there. We work through an Industrial Foundation Board of Directors. Ron Teecup is here tonight, representing the board. A couple of those live down in that area, and so again, they're sensitive to what is down there. So, this is our attempt to work with you guys and to work with the private sector in developing this particular location, to make sure that we have the ground available, so when companies come to us and they want 5, 10, 15, 30 acres of ground, we have that available for them, and we can show that to them. The good part about this is that we consider it to be go-ready, or build-ready, if you will, where we would have basically a plan for sewer and water and drainage. All the environmental work's been done on that property, so we have a plan in place. Once we get people to agree to that location, we have the plan in place to put in the infrastructure that's there. And again, there's always the possibility that, working with RISE grants, anything else like that, we might be able to extend that infrastructure even farther. So, right now, we think we have a good proposal before you, and we hope to gain your support for that tonight. I would also ask, if it's your pleasure, to waive third consideration and pass this, because we do have some timelines coming up here very shortly that we need to close on the property, otherwise we're going to have to extend options, and that might become kind of costly. So, if you can, that would be appreciated.
Ron Teecup, 56 Lakewood Villa, and I'm here tonight representing the Council Plus Industrial Foundation Board, as Bob mentioned. I've been on the board for over 20 years now, and this board comprised of seven or nine people that are all from around Council Plus. We really try to be good neighbors, and that's why we talked about the covenants that we have, who we look for when businesses come in to buy lots. We evaluate who they are, what type of employment base they have, what they do, and try to fit to that specific lot in that area. So we try to look at those things. One thing I differ with what Bob said, we've been looking for ground for 10 or 15 years. We're constantly doing that. Our mission really is to buy underdeveloped property and try and get businesses built there, up the tax base, and employ people in the community. And that's our goal. And we looked in this area, because in the comprehensive plan, it's already, it's set up to be I2, and that's where following what the comp plan calls for, and that's what, as councilmembers, I would assume you would try to do as well. We will work as most, as best we can to be good neighbors to the people in the area, and try and do that as best we can. Answer any questions you have, but just ask for your vote to approve this. Thank you.
Any questions? Anybody else? All right. You have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Motion to waive third.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing, is advertised on the matter of Ordinance 6248. Amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.070 by rezoning the properties located at 2425, 2427, and 2429 Avenue A, being lots 11, 12, and 13, Block 37, Central Subdivision, from R3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential to C2 Commercial as defined in Chapter 15.15. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak to the council in regards to this Seeing none, what is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
As I mentioned at the last council meeting, I was impressed by the developer on this particular project, the way that they communicated with the landowners and the neighbors nearby. I think it's a model for moving forward, for development on West Broadway, and I congratulate them for their handling of this, and as well as the neighbors. Supplying information to homeowners, I think, is the key, and they did this well.
And I want to add a comment. I don't know who made the comment this afternoon at study session, but it was said this afternoon that one of the reasons this restaurant was even looking at this site is because of the plans that we have to develop the West Broadway corridor. So it's just another positive economic development result from that plan. And I don't know who said that, was that you, Matt?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Motion to waive third.
Second.
Any discussion on the motions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. There are some new faces, so just for operating, housekeeping procedure, we now move into the ordinances and resolutions. The public hearing, you get 10 minutes to talk, but if you have something that's a resolution or an ordinance, and you would like to address the council, you're certainly able to do that, so... Madam Clerk?
Ordinance on second reading, Ordinance 6249, amending Title II Finance and Revenue by creating a new chapter, 2.30, and title Operating a Perpetual Care Cemetery.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Motion to waive third.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolutions, Resolution 15-268, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute memorandum of understanding agreement number 2015-16-222 with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the transfer of jurisdiction proportions of US 6 and Iowa 192.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
It was pointed out in the staff packet on this particular memorandum that this by no means finalizes transfer of jurisdiction for either West Broadway or North 16th, nor should it at this point till we better define the negotiations. So I didn't want folks out there to be confused about that. It appears as though there will be at least two different agreements that would be brought separately to the council for a transfer of jurisdiction. One, I believe, is for the West Broadway segment and the North 16th. Second agreement to be negotiated at a later time would concern Canesville from Sixth Street on out to I-80. That's a lot of property, that's a big undertaking. This memorandum, it's kind of interesting in the wording, it's kind of an agreement to agree to make an agreement at a later agreement point. So it really...
Well said.
So, since we all agreed on that, we can at least move forward into the next phase of negotiations, understanding that there's a lot more definition that people will need on costs and plans and whatnot. It's also addresses in part sort of a promise to do something for the interstate intersections that would serve the River Edge Park development, saying that they'll get to that after they're done with the other segments of the highway plan. We're not real totally sure what that means at this point, but it kind of tells me that they'll get to it when they get to it. So I guess we're going to agree to agree.
Yeah, it basically is the first step, that the Iowa Department of Transportation staff has indicated that the director of the Iowa Department of Transportation and the staff would like to work out the details of a transfer of jurisdiction. There is a Department of Transportation commission that actually votes on the action, and so if we weren't inclined to even enter into negotiations, it would have ended tonight. Or if we vote that way, it could end tonight. But if we vote to enter into a memorandum of understanding, then that gives them some assurance that we're willing to negotiate, and as Councilman Ringenberg said, those negotiations will be coming forward. Excuse me, they, and as for future jurisdictional transfers, those could be phased in, and even more than one, because as Councilman Ringenberg correctly pointed out, it's a big piece of ground, and so it may be that we would take portions one year, and two years later, another portion, but all that will come forward in the future, so...
I support this. This is very sensible at this time to look at... This is very sensible at this time to look at transferring the jurisdiction, that is, the control, the requirements to keep up a road from the State Department of Transportation to the city. And why do I say that? Well, the state is the sovereign entity, not the city. What that means is, is they at a stroke of a pen get to decide, well, even if the city exists, we exist at the pleasure of the state. They can tell us, you take this road today, they quote "give," put that in quotes, "give us the road" and give us no money whatsoever. Similarly, this has happened here relatively recently, if folks remember what used to be called State Highway 191. It's still called that when you get just, if you're going north, just south of Tri-Center at the Harrison County line, it becomes 191 again. A few years, relatively a few years ago, about a decade ago, I believe, the state offered the county, and as we're all, of course, county taxpayers, money to take that road, to completely rebuild it, if they would take, if we would take it as a county going forward. The county citing some understandable concerns about ongoing and future maintenance of the road turned it down, and then the state, a couple of years later, again gave the road to the county, that is you, with no money attached. So your property taxes had to cover it, rather than your state tax money, which went to another part of the state. You didn't get the benefit of what you paid with one hand versus the other. And so, bottom line, the state can make us take this over, and right now, rightly so, I believe, the mayoral administration is entering into talks with the State Department of Transportation to see if we can get enough money to rebuild the road for the first time, particularly West Broadway, for the first time since 1950, completely rebuilding it. And as I understand it, putting in actual storm sewers, not just at the corners of the blocks as currently, which is insufficient, as anyone who drives there when it rains knows, but along the way, a proper, modern street and paid for with your state tax money, rather than it going to another part of the state. So it's very sensible to enter negotiations and get a very good deal now, as opposed to saying no and definitely getting it later, and you're going to have to foot all the bill. You'll not only pay your state property, your income tax, rather, bill, and pay for another part of the state's road, but you're going to then pay for entirely out of your property tax for the roads here, and that doesn't seem sensible to me. So I think this is a smart move on our part.
Well, I think it's important to reiterate that the street will be in brand-new condition when the city does take ownership of it, so any maintenance costs would presumably be well into the future. So that also is to the benefit of our local taxpayers.
I think the most exciting part is that this should help spur the redevelopment of West Broadway. It's hard to ask businesses to locate on a street that has no storm sewer, that has a giant hump in the middle, that, you know, I think that the state's done a good job in snow removal and those things, but they're not going to rebuild that road. They do not have the budget for that, I'm told. So we don't have the money to rebuild it without their contributing to that. So I think it's one of the things that we're going to have to see happen before we can expect a lot of development on West Broadway. So I'm really excited that we're entering into this phase of discussion, we can move forward.
I think it's going to be a catalyst for the growth on West Broadway, much needed.
Having said that, you know, it's typically not wise to enter into negotiations when a gun is against your head, and nobody's suggesting that that's the case currently, nor are we at, totally at the whim of the state on this. They are asking for an agreement to be made, and if the terms of what is being proposed change to the point that this body feels that the city and the taxpayers are being put at a disadvantage, we have the ability to tell the state, thank you, but no thank you. And so that will be one of my objectives moving forward, is to make sure that this is done orderly and in a manner that best serves the interests of everybody in the city, the taxpayers and those who live in the West Broadway corridor.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Resolution 15-269, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Ames Construction Incorporated for the 8th Street and 12th Avenue Sewer and the 20th Avenue Sewer Relocation Projects.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Resolution 15-270, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Trafficware Group Incorporated for the Canesville Boulevard, US Highway 6 Traffic Adaptive Signal Control Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I was happy to see that the bid for this particular expense came in 21.4% less than the engineer's estimate. A bulk of it is federally funded, and the goal of this will to, will be to time the lights in a proactive manner to reduce traffic on the 100 block, which gets congested.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Resolution 15-271, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Compass Utility LLC for the Dodge Riverside Clubhouse Parking Lot Reconstruction Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Resolution 15-272, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Snyder &amp; Associates Incorporated for engineering services in connection with the Levy Certification Geotechnical MR2 Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Resolution 15-273, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Compass Utility LLC for the Council Bluff Athletic Complex Sewer Manhole Locations Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
You know, I completely forgot to note that of the four resolutions we passed tonight with bids, that all four of them came under engineer's estimate. I know I've complained before that they're, they seem to be going in the opposite direction. So this is really good to see, and that we're getting good bids and saving taxpayer dollars.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Resolution 15-274, officially designating the city council meeting dates for the City of Council Bluffs during the 2016 calendar year.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
All second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Resolution 15-275, authorizing the city clerk to certify the weed assessments to the Potawatomi County Treasurer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Resolution 15-276, authorizing the city clerk to certify the solid waste nuisance assessments to the Potawatomi County Treasurer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Resolution 277, authorizing the city clerk to certify the sewer, water, and refuse liens to the Potawatomi County Treasurer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Well, I harp on this every time it comes before us, and I'm very, very disappointed and disheartened that the number seems to increase. These last three resolutions total almost $551,000 that residents did not pay for their, keeping their weeds under control in their yard, solid waste sitting in their yard that the cities have to take care of, and worse, people that don't pay their garbage bills. I feel like I'm the nag of the council, because I always talk about this, and I really, people, please pay your garbage bill, please, because it's costing all of us.
According to the numbers noted in the non-peril and by the city staff, this means that about a quarter of those being billed are now having their properties leaned. And if you do the math backwards on this, after you subtract the normal billing amount, you still have excess being collected of $277,000 on top of the normal garbage fees.
And I just think something to note quickly on this, you can pay online, you can set it up for automatic payments, so you don't have to worry about it. However, we found out today, well, it came out in the mail, but if you are automatically paying, make sure you redo it this month, because they changed systems, so it will not work. So you just have to go on and re-sign up. Don't want someone to be late because of that.
And also, in the near, in the very near future, the Department of Health Director will put your names on the website, so that you can go there and easily check to see if you're on there or not on there. It's not a witch hunt, it's just that some people may not be aware that they're on the list, and it's a good, it'll be a good way to check and make sure that you're not on the list.
There was some discussion this afternoon about making the process less cumbersome and a bit clearer on the website, and it's not a criticism of the people putting it together. It's a complicated task, a lot of moving parts. But as they acknowledge, just like anything else in this world, it could be a little better, a little bit simpler to use. And the point I had this afternoon was, if you're already signed up, when you get a bill, it doesn't note on there that you have signed up for automatic payments. And so maybe it ought to do that, so that you don't wonder. I myself wondered when I got mine the other day. I thought, I'm signed up, aren't I? And so, and people tell me that they have that same concern, and I think we're really mindful as well about the point, is I think a lot of us get busy and need to pay it. There are some folks in the community, though, who have to choose between the garbage bill and their medication or food, so I believe we're all mindful, the fact that, will we ever get to 100%? Probably not. And a legitimate concern as to why there'd be a delay in paying that, there are certainly some of those, and so it's not as if everyone is shirking their responsibility, if they could afford it. But saying that, there are a lot of people who could, and so they should pay their bill, so that the rest of us aren't subsidizing someone who can't afford to pay their garbage bill.
One other area that we discussed was that, one of the areas that's growing in amount is that the state legislature made some changes, and what that meant was that a landlord can designate the tenant as the person to pay the garbage bill, which is fine, but it doesn't allow the city any longer to lean that property when it's not paid, where if I don't pay it, I get leaned, and it will get paid if I want to sell my house or refinance my house. But that's not the case anymore for rental properties, and it's very hard to get that money from a tenant who isn't paying. We have some that have not paid since the day the law changed. And the problem with that is, is our only recourse is to take the tenant to court, which becomes very expensive when you start getting attorneys involved. So it's making it a little bit harder, and that number has been climbing steadily since the law went into effect. So it really limits our ability to collect on those properties.
And we can include the garbage bill, so-called enterprise system, we can include it in your general property taxes. Some folks have asked, why does, in Omaha, they don't pay for garbage, for example. Well, they do, actually. Nobody gets anything free in this world. They, in Nebraska, they have, it's a different state. I know we get all our television, or most of our television, in southwest Iowa from Omaha. So sometimes I think we forget that Iowa has very different laws in Nebraska on many, many things, and this is one of them. In Nebraska, they have socialized public services. They're the only state that has, for example, all their power. They have a socialist power system. It's all owned by the state on behalf of the people. In Iowa, we have a very different system. It's free-market based, and private companies compete, and, you know, so your bills aren't all rolled up in your tax bill, because the state is not controlling the public services. So we, short answer to that is, we can't do it, because the state law says that it's paid separately. And so I think sometimes folks forget that we follow the laws from Des Moines, not Lincoln.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Applications permits and cancellations.
Motion to approve 7A, 1 through 3 inclusive.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Madam Clerk, any requests from citizens to be heard?
None received.
Anybody from the council like to address the, or anybody from the audience, I'm sorry, like to address the council?
You guys.
All right. Thank you, Bruce. Anyone from the council?
Should we explain why we're wearing these shirts tonight? Who would like to do that? Because...
You got the mic or phone?
I, I was, Marcy? You never talk about it. Go ahead. Why are we wearing these shirts?
I'm like putting her on the spot.
What a way to deflect. She organized all of us wearing the shirts.
Well, we're wearing the shirts today. They're sponsored by the Police Department and the Sheriff's Department and the State Patrol, and they're to support cancer and all forms of cancer, not just breast cancer, all forms of cancer. So that's why we're all wearing the t-shirts.
And in two weeks from tonight, we'll be in pink t-shirts to support breast cancer. October is Breast Cancer Month.
Yes.
I won't put you on the spot.
Very good.
And I would point out, when we do these very important parts of the public service announcement side of our positions, both mayor and council, we do so out of our own pocket.
Any other discussion? I'd like to take a minute to thank the council from Michael Lee Massey, and my guess is you'll probably feel the same way I do when I tell you why he wants to thank you, in that I had a great opportunity today. Mr. Massey came into my office and asked if I had an hour to spend with him, as he drove around to the food pantries and gave out produce that he'd grown on city property that we gave him a license to occupy. And so throughout the summer, Mr. Massey, who's a retired butcher, has been growing produce and delivering it to various food pantries around the city, and today was his last harvest. And so we went to four different food pantries and gave those people that really need the food and can't afford to buy it themselves, fresh grown produce. So he wanted me to thank you for giving him the opportunity to work in the heat all summer to do this. And so when he took me with him to hand it out, I felt a little guilty in accepting people's thanks. And so on behalf of the council, on behalf of those people that got produce throughout the summer and this fall, it is a feel-good story to thank Michael Lee Massey, who took his retired time to work all summer long to do something for his fellow man. So thank you, Michael.
He deserves a ton of love.
And with that, we're adjourned.
At Council Bluff Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity-safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology, because saving you time saves you money.
At Council Bluff Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call, and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council Bluff Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
The Mid-America Center is the Heartland's premier entertainment and convention center. September 27th, Papa Roach and headliner Five Finger Death Punch rock Council Bluffs. Then rock opera takes the stage with the return of TSO, November 18th. Over at the convention center, over 200 exhibitors are on hand at the Callahan Craft Show. And October 18th, vendors aspire to inspire at the Wedding Essentials Idea Show. Remember, the MAC offers free parking for all events. Tickets, information, and more at midamericacenter.com.